Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council Subcommittee hearing for the Committee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We're ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee of Zoning and Franchises. I'm Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. Today, I'm joined by Councilmember Moya Shoumen, Mar Morado. Today, we are scheduled to vote on eight different proposals. The first proposal has been a long time in the making and is an exciting opportunity for the Bronx. Four new Metro North stations are scheduled to be constructed by the MTA by 2027 in the Bronx, at Co-op City, Parkchester Van Ness, Morris Park, and Hunts Point. Not only will these four new stations provide the Bronx with new, better public transportation, but they will also provide an opportunity to create new, affordable housing and more jobs. Known as the Bronx Metro North Station Area Study, the proposed actions would affect an area that is approximately forty-six blocks and primarily along major corridors near the future Parkchester Van Ness and Morris Park Metro North stations in the Bronx community districts nine, ten, and eleven. The proposal being made by the administration consists of LU's one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh nine through one thirteen. These actions involve a series of rezoning together with a rezoning tax amendment that will map mandatory inclusionary housing areas over the rezoned areas, as well as create a special district called the Special East Chester, East Tremont Corridor District. The proposal also involves several changes to the city's map that would de-map some streets and create new street networks and pedestrian plazas. Together, these actions, as we are recommended to modify today, are projected to create approximately seven thousand new units of housing. The developers of residential projects in MIA's designated areas will be required to make twenty to thirty percent of the units permanently affordable to families making an average between forty to eighty percent AMI. For a family of three, this translates to a household income between fifty-six thousand and one hundred and twelve thousand. This proposal is an exciting opportunity for the Bronx because we need new housing, especially affordable housing. And we've just been joined by Majority Leader Amanda Farias. If we do not build more housing, communities in the Bronx will continue to get priced out. So, we need to act, but this does not mean we should just build anywhere. We can act as high as we can. New buildings have to take into account that the surrounding context and existing residents. Development should not be disproportionately bigger than neighborhoods' buildings. Therefore, we are recommending several modifications to these proposals to achieve this balance. In the section of rezoning that will be near the new Morris Park Metro North station, we are recommending less density in this area and capping building heights. This will still create an opportunity for the creation of much-needed housing. It will also allow the expansion of the medical campuses around Morris Park, which will provide more jobs while also being sensitive to the existing homes in nearby lower-density areas. Another modification we are recommending is to make the rezoning more contextual at sixteen oh one Bronxdale Avenue, one of the largest sites of the rezoning. Here, we must recognize its proximity to lower-density home along Van Ness and Pierce Avenue. As a result, we are recommending a reduction in the maximum heights of the building that will front Bronxdale Avenue and allow slightly larger buildings on west of the site, which is closer to the new Parkchester Van Ness Metro North station. This will provide a progression in density and height from the lower-density homes to the east to the proposed higher-density new residential area planned to the west of Bronxdale Avenue. Moving over to the areas to be rezoned along East Tremont Avenue near the existing Parkchester North and South condos. Here, while we are maintaining the proposed density proposed by the administration, we are recommending to moderately increase the building's height to certain limits areas to achieve better design and more amenities for the local community, such as an open space, additional parking, retail, and enhanced accessibility. We believe these modifications will increase the quality of the new residential developments in this area, which would be a significant asset to the community. Further, after careful study to the administration's proposal and close consultation with the local members, we are recommending the removal of two relatively small proposed rezoning areas to address potential impact to existing nearby low-density homes. First, we are removing the proposed rezoning of the proposed R six dash one area at Stillwell and East Chester Avenue between Seminole Street and Rhine-Lander Avenue. Second, we are removing a small area located where Semino's Avenue and Tembrooke Avenue converge. That is disconnected from the other areas being rezoned. Beyond the recommended changes in density and the height to the rezoned areas, we are also recommending that the proposal be modified to require a minimal amount of parking for new residential developments in this new special district. We all know that parking in Morris Park, Parkchester, and Van Ness is lacking. Even though these new developments will be next to Metro North stations that will provide a faster way to get into Manhattan and to go up north, the reality is that people living in this section of the Bronx still need a car to go about their everyday lives, to food shop, to see the doctor, and to drive children to school and after-school activities. And this is due to the simple fact that this area is not adequately served by public buses and subways. So, we are going to make sure that the families that move into these new housing have somewhere to park and not at the expense of existing neighborhood residents. Lastly, we are modifying the MIH affordability options to reflect the local communities in which these new housing units are being introduced. With these modifications, I strongly believe that this proposal will bring the much-needed new affordable housing and job that families in the Bronx deserve. While taking into account the context of existing neighborhoods, with all that said, I will repeat that I said when the administration first presented its proposal to this Subcommittee, we need more housing, but not housing alone is not sufficient. Bronx residents need more access to parks, schools, libraries. They need better infrastructure and streets that do not flood every time it rains. Our firehouses and precincts need to be sufficiently staffed, so although the Bronx is open to new development, it has to come with actual and sufficient investments in our communities. I'm glad to state today that the administration, as a part of this proposal, has agreed to make a significant capital investment to the tune of four hundred and ninety-eight point five million in the communities that will be impacted by this rezoning and the new Metro North stations. The administration will be repairing and redesigning streets, improving a number of parks, investing in our schools, and improving the storm-water drainage system. I'm going to let my colleagues speak more about these much-needed investments. I am particularly glad to announce the commitments by the administrations near the new Co-op City Station in my district. We have secured commitments to address illegal dumping around Edson Avenue and Gun Hill and to clear out debris along the waterfront of Hutchinson River. We also secure commitments from the MTA to explore new bus routes to ensure Co-op City residents have the access to the new Metro North station once it comes online. Overall, this proposal with modifications, and we've just been joined by Councilmember Shawna Bray. Overall, this proposal with modifications, we are recommending is a step in the right direction. It will provide more housing for all. The size of new development will be appropriate and needed investments in our communities will be made. Before I continue describing the other votes, I want to give Councilmembers whose communities in the Bronx will be directly affected by the administration's proposal as an opportunity to comment. I will now give the floor to Majority Leader Farias.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Today, we are voting to bring a long overdue investment to the Bronx with four new Metro North stations. The approval of this rezoning would create much-needed housing, more jobs, facilitate pedestrian safety upgrades, additional transit options, and substantial infrastructure investment throughout the rezoning area. The design features laid out in this plan are informed by the extensive community outreach I initiated along with the City Council Planning and Land Use Teams. Over the last several months, I hosted four in-person and virtual events in Parkchester, allowing my constituents multiple opportunities to discuss the proposals with the Department of City Planning and local developers. This was critical in ensuring neighbors could provide direct feedback on the essential aspects of maintaining the culture of our shared community. We heard feedback on the type of community space needed, what types of infrastructure enhancements we'd like to see, and had detailed conversations about investments that are needed throughout the communities currently. I am particularly excited to approve a project that is mandating affordable housing. Through modifications, no less than twenty-five percent of units created in Council District eighteen will be provided to households at an average of sixty percent of the area median income. In other words, that means the housing will be affordable to the average Bronx family who is already living there. As Chair Riley noted, we are modifying two R eight X areas near Parkchester to create more flexibility to provide much-needed amenities, such as additional parking, retail and community space, open green space, and accessibility. I want to thank the hundreds of community members who came to our public info sessions and filled out our survey to guide us to this decision. While I'm proud to champion housing development in this proposal, I am equally as proud of the city investments that I've secured in this process. I have been at the negotiating table day and night over this extended period of time, fighting to deliver key wins for the future of Parkchester, Castle Hill, and our surrounding communities. Through this rezoning, Parkchester and District eighteen can expect the following in the coming years: capital upgrades to PS one oh six, MS one twenty-seven Archer Elementary, Linden Tree Elementary, and PS twelve totaling over ten million. This includes a roof replacement, additional technology, and auditorium upgrades, to name a few. Complete playground renovations at Taylor Playground, Castle Hill Playground, and Virginia Playground totaling over forty-five million. Complete overhaul of East Tremont Avenue, including a parking study to considered angle parking, increased pedestrian safety with a whole-new sidewalk network, ADA accessible crosswalks, and improved lighting throughout the key corridor totaling over forty-two million. A commitment to incorporate the iconic terracotta statues of Parkchester into the Parkchester Van Ness Station design, a community advisory board to offer their insight throughout the development process for both eighteen eighty and two thousand dash two thousand forty East Tremont avenues. Security cameras and security guard patrols in and around the Parkchester Van Ness Station and other stations. Exploration of affordable homeownership opportunities and the final design of housing opportunities, hundred and seventy million for DEP, for catch basin upgrades, sewer improvements, and waterline repairs, and many more items which will be made public in the points of agreement and listed on our website following full approval of this application. It is this list and so much more that allows me to support this project with confidence today. I want to take a moment to thank the people that have been working with me all these hours to get here. First and foremost, my Chief of Staff Rebecca Nieves, Council Land Use Director Paris Strater, and our Land Use Team Ryan Coat, Chelsea Kelly, William Vidal, and Anne McCaughy, and folks who helped see this move along. My council colleagues, who also fought for their needs of their districts, our two development teams, ZP Realty and owners of two thousand dash two thousand forty East Tremont Avenue, Commissioner Dan Grotnick, and the Department of City Planning Team, and the mayor and his administration. Through our modifications to the Bronx Metro North rezoning proposal and the holistic city investments we all fought for, we're demanding attention to the Bronx. Your Land Use Committee Chair Salamanca, Zoning and Franchises Chair Riley, Councilmember Mar Morado, and myself, as the current Majority Leader, are all long-term Bronxites. And the success of this rezoning is a testament to our collaboration, our dedication to neighborhoods that made us, and our love for our home borough of the Bronx. This rezoning is the future of our borough, a future with more access to jobs, greater transit, new space for community connections and organizations, state-of-the-art housing for everyone, and safer streets. And with that, I urge my colleagues to vote aye.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Councilmember Mar Morado.
Oh, thank you, Chair Riley. Members of District thirteen that are here today or at home listening in, today I speak to you directly. I know that when the proposal of the Bronx Metro North was introduced to District thirteen, many within our community anticipated this project with excitement, myself included. But once the proposal to create housing was presented to us, many of us had concerns of how this would impact and affect our community and everyday life. So, it's an honor to be in this role to help navigate what our vision of development in District thirteen should look like. Today, we stand at a pivotal moment for our community. In countless meetings, my constituents and I have made it clear that we are not anti-development. We care deeply about our neighborhoods, and it's our duty to ensure the integrity, fabric, and content of our district that remains intact. The original proposal that was presented to us in January threatened to alter our community in an unacceptable and irreversible way. But through tireless consultations with our City Council Planning, Land Use Team, District thirteen constituents, and key community stakeholders, we have fought and won significant modifications alongside a package of real capital investment to District thirteen. And I want to be clear, I understand the desire to build housing. However, one size does not fit all, and it's my job to represent and fight for what our district wants and needs. I have listened to you and fought to make sure the administration heard our needs loud and clear. We have capped building heights throughout the rezoning area to maintain our community's character. This means that new developments will not overshadow our homes, streets, preserving the skyline and ambience to make our neighborhood unique. We have reduced density along East Chester Road and floor area potential near Morris Park Station to respect our low-density neighborhoods in Van Ness and Morris Park. This action ensures that new buildings will not overcrowd our streets or strain our infrastructure, keeping our community livable and vibrant. We have removed the entire R six one zoning district along Stillwell Avenue and East Chester Road to preserve the low-scale residential community in Morris Park. This protects our neighborhoods from high-rise developments that would cut out and be out of place among our family and low-density homes. We have removed the C four three zoning district at Seminole Avenue and Morris Park, which does not fit the context of our neighborhood. By doing this, we ensure that any new development aligns with existing look and feel of our community while maintaining the character and charm that we cherish. We live in a transit desert where cars are a necessity for daily activities. The Bronx Metro North Rail is not here yet, and even after it arrives, people will still need their cars. We must be proactive in ensuring parking is a part of any zoning changes. That's why I have fought tirelessly to get our parking mandates back. It was important to us. This ensures developers cannot add more housing without creating parking for our district and our residents. Parking is essential for daily activities, such as dropping children off at school or practice, grabbing groceries for the week, and even commuting to work. By reinstating parking mandates, we provide the community with the promise of accessibility, transportation, and the ability to fully commute within our district and beyond. We also have a commitment from the administration to create a parking lot near one of our District thirteen stations. And since the beginning of this process, especially since taking office, I have been firm that any changes in zoning must align with our community's vision and come with substantial city investment in our community. Our working-class families in our borough and our district have been largely disregarded by the city for decades, and this must change. It will change now. We need improvements to our parks, substantial upgrades to our sewers and flood-prone streets, and respect for the suburban lifestyle that has brought many families to the East Bronx for generations. I am proud to announce the following commitments from the administration based on our tireless efforts. With the influx of people coming in our area, we need to invest in our community's public safety and law enforcement agencies. They are the fabric of our neighborhoods and the frontline workers that protect our neighbors, childrens, and communities. I am so proud to have secured ten million dollars for substantial upgrades to rehabilitate and modernize the Forty-Ninth Precinct. These funds will ensure that our police officers have the resources and facilities they need to keep our community safe and secure for now and in the future. Thank you to our officers for everything that you do, and we hope to see your new and improved precinct soon. You guys really do deserve it. The current Morris Park families and the new families that come to our district need quality parks and playgrounds. With the highest rates of asthma, we need to invest in green space in our parks. I have secured more than fifty million dollars to upgrade Loretto Park, Buffano Park, but anybody in my district calls it Waterberry Park, Brady Park, and the Pelham Bay Park ballfields. We are ensuring that they host families for many, many years to come. These upgrades will include new playgrounds, equipment, improved landscaping, and enhanced safety features, creating a vibrant and welcoming space for our children to play and for our community to gather. Long-neglected streets like Basset Avenue, Stillwell Avenue, and East Chester Road will finally receive the significant upgrades, including lighting, sidewalks, intersection, and traffic monitoring improvements, addressing our community's concerns about traffic congestion on the roadway. These improvements will make our streets safer for pedestrians and drivers alike, reducing accidents and improving the overall quality of life for our travelers. And tonight, we're supposed to have some type of flooding here in our district, I guess, throughout the whole city, but this is nothing new to District thirteen. I have firsthand witnessed the damage caused to our homes, streets, due to the lack of effective sewer and draining infrastructure. Knowing this, I would not allow any new construction or building to happen without commitments of improvements to our infrastructure. I am proud to have secured nearly two hundred million dollars from the DEP to study and implement upgrades to flood-prone areas such as Basset Avenue, Marconi Street, Stillwell Avenue, and the Morris Park area, ensuring that our community does not continue to get damaged or washed out during this type of rainstorm. These upgrades will include improved drainage systems, flood barriers, and other infrastructure improvements designed to protect our homes, streets from flooding. Your voices and values have been instrumental in shaping this plan, and I extend my heartfelt gratitude to everyone in District thirteen that participated in this process. This revised proposal is a testament to our collective strength and commitment. It strikes a vital balance by providing our fair share of housing while preserving the character of our low-density neighborhood in District thirteen. The substantial capital investment in our community's infrastructure will enhance our quality of life for generations to come. Together, we achieved a significant victory for our district. This moment proves that when we unite and we fight for our values, we can create meaningful, lasting change while keeping a familiar and quaint aspects of our community intact. I want to give a big thank you to the Land Use Team here in City Council, Paris, Ryan, Chelsea, William, Anne. Throughout this process, your patience and capability of understanding what my community's future vision of what District thirteen should be about has been absolutely amazing, and I appreciate it. I also want to thank my team, the District thirteen team, for holding down our district office throughout this process. And most importantly, my Chief of Staff, April Cardena. You have been solid throughout this process, and I appreciate the long days and nights you have put in alongside me. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Mar Morado. We've been joined by Councilmember Wrestler. The second proposal we are voting on today is to approve with modifications LU's one oh one through one oh four, concerning a proposal known as Arthur Kill Terminal. The proposal consists of creating a manufacturing staging area for assembling wind turbines just south of the Outer Bridge Crossing in Minority Leader Barelli's district. As we have seen once again this summer, climate change is here, and as a city, we need to reduce our carbon footprint. A critical way to achieve this is to increase the supply of renewable energy. This proposal is a key component to constructing new wind turbines off the coast of New York State. The Arthur Kill Terminal proposal involves four actions. The first proposed action involves a tax amendment to the Special South Richmond Development District. The tax amendment would update the goals of the special district to recognize the need to create new sources of renewable energy. It will also expand the special district's authorization to specifically address projects to seek to support the city's green energy infrastructure. The second action is a landfill action to create the needed dock on the portion of the site that is underwater along the shore. The third action is a special permit to increase maximum building heights, which would accommodate the needed components of the wind turbines. And the fourth action is to de-map a portion of Richmond Valley Road. We are recommending proposed modification to the tax amendment application to ensure that in order to receive a city planning authorization for any needed flexibility in the zoning, that the project must support the city's green energy infrastructure, which the Arthur Kill Terminal does do. Minority Leader Barelli supports this proposal as modified. The third vote is to approve LU's one twenty-two and one twenty-three relating to the Prince Point Development Proposal, located at the southern end of Staten Island, also within Minority Leader Barelli's district. The requested action together will facilitate the establishment of the new map streets and the development of a one hundred and eighth detached, single-family homes in the Prince Bay neighborhood and in the Special South Richmond Development District. The proposal includes two actions. The first is a city map amendment to map four new streets. The second is a zoning tax amendment related to the vested provisions in the special district, and more specifically, to facilitate certain developments approved prior to the adoption of lower-density growth management areas. Minority Leader Barelli is in support of this proposal. The fourth vote is to approve with modifications LU's one fourteen, one fifteen, and one sixteen related to the five hundred Kent Avenue Proposal, located in Williamsburg neighborhood in Brooklyn within Councilmember Wrestler's district. The requested actions will facilitate the development of a new twenty-three-story commercial office building with ground-floor retail, two hundred and thirty-four parking spaces, over forty-nine thousand square feet of public accessible open space, which will include an approximately twenty-three thousand square-foot waterfront public access area. The proposal consists of three actions. The first is a zoning map amendment to change the existing M three dash one district to the M one dash five district. There are also two related zoning special permits, which will permit the modification of certain bulk regulations on waterfront blocks and also permit a parking garage with two hundred and thirty-four parking spaces. With this proposal, we are recommending a modification to the restricted declaration, which accompanies the special permits approved by the City Planning Commission to ensure that all traffic mitigations required by the project's environmental impact statement are implemented in a timely manner. Councilmember Wrestler is in support of this proposal as modified, and I would like to give the floor to Councilmember Wrestler to give any remarks.
I just want to firstly say it is always a pleasure to be with Chair Riley in this Subcommittee. Chair Riley does a tremendous job, and we're fortunate to have him in this critical role. Yeah, I'm very proud that District thirty-three has generated more new housing than any other council district in the city of New York for about fifteen years. And with the two land use actions that were advancing today, we will both expand housing and affordable housing where it's terribly needed, and we will also create an exciting new economic development project. And both projects are in the heart of the South Williamsburg Bed-Stuy community. The first project on Myrtle Avenue, seven twelve, will generate over forty units of housing, be an MIH Option One project that generates deeply affordable housing for the community. The development team has been an absolute pleasure to work with. They are deeply rooted in our community, care about our neighborhood. They've even agreed to make some modest community facility space available to a great organization, HESID, that does this beautiful thing where they provide rides to people who need to go to medical appointments or family members who are visiting family members who are in medical care at no cost. But that extraordinary volunteer operation happens from people's homes. Now, we'll finally have a home base where those volunteers can better coordinate those rides at this new residential development, mixed-use development, I should say. And the other project, five hundred Kent, is one that we have painstakingly negotiated since before I was even on the City Council. The development team approached me when I was a Councilmember-elect, and I wasn't ever sure that we were going to get this project done. There were some very, I think, big, open concerns. My number-one concern was My number-one concern was that this project could, that the zoning that we're approving could allow for a last-mile facility. But thanks to, I think, a development team, an applicant team that was willing to work with us creatively, cared deeply about partnering with the community, we were able to develop a project where we have total confidence that this will never, ever be a last-mile facility. And I'm optimistic that we're going to create some great jobs and a great project in the heart of South Williamsburg next to the Navy Yard. I really want to thank everybody who's been a part of both of these projects at seven twelve Myrtle, Rabbi Abe Lichtenstein and Mrs. Lichtenstein have been a pleasure to work with. At five hundred Kent, I really want to thank the council team, especially William Vidal, who's not here today but was instrumental in us coming up with a creative solution to make this happen. Lena from Council Land Use, Brian from Council Land Use have both been tremendous partners and guides. My staff, Molly Haley in particular, has been really helpful. I want to thank Ashley Thompson from Capolino, who is always an honest broker and a helpful partner in navigating projects in our district. And and I want to, lastly, but perhaps most importantly, thank UJO and Rabbi Niederman, who developed a joint application with the applicant partner that really gave me confidence that this was a project that would be for the betterment of my community. And, you know, we take a bit of a leap of faith as council members in approving land use changes, that what applicants tell us are what they will actually do. And in this instance, I think we have real protections to have confidence that the five hundred Kent project is going to be what we have been told. And so I really just want to thank everybody for their support and guidance on both of these land use actions. I'm really happy to hear, happy that we're continuing to build more housing and create more economic opportunity in District thirty-three. It's 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 a good day for our community, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. The fifth vote is to approve with modifications LU's one twenty and one twenty-one relating to the seven twelve Myrtle Avenue Proposal located in Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood in Brooklyn, also within Councilmember Wrestler's district. The proposed development consists of new nine-story mixed-use building projected to have approximately sixty-two units, including fifteen permanently affordable housing and ground-floor retail. The proposal consists of two actions. The first is a zoning map amendment to change an existing M one dash two district to an R seven D slash C two dash four district. The related action is a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Our modification will be to remove MIH Option Two and to add the deep affordability option, which will make twenty to twenty-five percent of the proposed income restricted apartments permanently affordable. Councilmember Wrestler supports this proposal as modified. The sixth vote is to approve with modifications LU's one seventeen and one eighteen relating to the thirty thirty-three Avenue V Proposal located in Sheep's Head Bay neighborhood in Brooklyn and within Councilmember Narcisse's district. This proposed development consists of a new nine-story mixed-use building projected to have approximately a hundred and nine units, including twenty-seven affordable apartments and ground-floor retail. The proposal consists of two actions. The first is a zoning map amendment to change the existing R four slash C one dash two district to an R seven D slash C two dash four district. The related action is a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Our modification will be to remove MIH Option Two and add the deep affordability option, which will make twenty to twenty-five percent of the proposed income restricted apartments permanently affordable. Councilmember Narcisse supports this proposal as modified. The seventh vote is to approve LU one nineteen related to the one ninety-seven Berry Street Proposal located in Williamsburg neighborhood in Brooklyn within Councilmember Gutierrez's district. The proposal will rezon in area within the existing special mixed-use district, which would have the effect of reducing the required accessory parking requirements applicable to an existing building. The proposed consists of a zoning map amendment to change the existing M one dash two slash R six B district to an M one dash four slash R six B district within the existing special MX dash eight mixed-use district. Councilmember Gutierrez is in support of this proposal. The final vote for today is a vote to recommend a disapproval LU one twenty-four, a petition for Wings and Seafood Incorporated, seeking a revocal consent for a sidewalk cafe located at seven eighty-five Fairview Avenue in Queens in Councilmember Holden's district. This subcommittee has a public hearing on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at which serious concerns and quality-of-life issues concerning this proposed sidewalk cafe were raised by Councilmember Holden in whose district this restaurant is located. The Councilmember Holden has provided the following statement explaining why this disapproval is warranted, which he had asked that I read into the record. He thanked me. He said, "Thank you, Chair Riley, and members of the subcommittee for the opportunity to address you regarding the application number D two four five zero zero eight seven zero five seven SWQ Wings and Seafood, seeking a revocal consent to operate a sidewalk cafe at seven eighty-five Fairview Avenue in Ridgewood within Community District Five. I am opposed to this application for several reasons. One, underutilization and misuse. This outdoor dining setup is rarely used and often repurposed for storage or decorative purposes. Such misuse of public space is unacceptable. Two, excessive occupation of public space. The combination of sidewalk cafe and outdoor dining is excessive. The sidewalk is a critical public pathway located at the entrance exit of the Forest Avenue M Train Station. It is across from the Greater Ridgewood Youth Council After School Program Building, IS ninety-three, the Queens Library-Ridgewood Branch, and Rosemary Playground. Private entities should not monopolize public spaces for profit, especially in such a heavily trafficked area. Three, unauthorized construction. The application constructed the sidewalk cafe structure before obtaining approval, resulting in an apartment of buildings violation for extending the building without permits. This disregard of regulation is concerning. During the July twenty-fourth Subcommittee hearing, the owner's responses were insufficient and demonstrated a lack of understanding and sincerity about the violation and community concerns. Additionally, we have received many complaints from residents, and the owner failed to provide evidence of community support for both the roadway dining and sidewalk cafe, contrary to their claims. The lack of community support for this establishment is clear indication of community's strong opposition. Ridgewood is a heavily congested community with many pedestrians utilizing sidewalks and cars being parked. This establishment has shown disregard for both pedestrians and vehicular needs. Given these issues, I urge my colleagues to vote no or vote yes to disapprove on this sidewalk cafe application. The establishment has shown a genuine commitment to working, has not shown a genuine commitment to working with the community, and approving this application would set a concerning precedent. Thank you for consideration, considering my position on this matter. That concludes the content of Councilmember Holden's remarks. Counselor, are there any council member with questions or remarks at this time appearing remotely who have questions or remarks of today's items? Should use the raise hand button now. Counsel, with any members in order that their hands are raised when they ask questions. There being no members with questions, I would now call for a vote to approve with modifications LU's one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, and one oh four relating to the Arthur Kill Terminal Proposal to approve with modification LU's one oh six, one oh seven, one oh nine, one ten, one eleven, one twelve, one thirteen relating to the Bronx Metro North Station area proposal to approve with modifications LU's one fourteen, one fifteen, and one sixteen relating to the five hundred Kent Avenue rezoning proposal to approve with modifications LU's one seventeen and one eighteen relating to the thirty thirty-three Avenue V rezoning proposal to approve LU's one nineteen relating to the one ninety-seven Berry Street rezoning proposal to approve with modifications LU's one twenty and one twenty-one relating to the seven twelve Myrtle Avenue rezoning proposal to approve LU's one twenty-two and one twenty-three relating to the Prince Point Development Proposal and to disapprove LU's one twenty-four relating to the Wings and Seafood Sidewalk Cafe proposal. Counsel, please call the roll.
Chair Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Moya.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Abreu.
Aye.
Councilmember Shillman.
Aye.
Chair by a vote of four in the affirmative, zero in opposition, and no abstentions. The items are approved or approved with modifications as you've just described, except LU one twenty-four, the Wings and Seafood Sidewalk Cafe application, which is disapproved. All items are referred to the full Land Use Committee.
Thank you. We will close the vote. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, land use, and other council staff, and Sergeant Orange participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned.